Alpha Day, the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation Housing is reconvening from recess on Friday, March 4th. Today is Tuesday, March 15, 2022, and the time now is 1:33. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom, those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your patience and for accommodating the Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. For this public hearing, we're disseminating the email to all centers and all main media broadcasting outlets on Friday, March 4th, and then again on March 10th. Again, today is Tuesday, March 15, 2022, is 1:33. The bill we will be entertaining this afternoon is Bill Number 249-36-COR, introduced by my colleague Senator Telo Titigui, co-sponsored by Speaker Theresa M. Terlai, and Senator Sabina Flores Perez, and Senator Joanne Brown. Now to amend Section 1D of Chapter 5 Public Law 36-54, relative to prioritizing Veterans Services by exempting the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs from Bureau Budget and Management Research Allotment Release Control and Appropriation Reserve Authority. And by other way, the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs to utilize the unexpendable balance of funds appropriate to agency pursuant to Public Law 35-99. The rules of conduct for this hearing is this Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff, and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon. Members of the committee and/or noncommittee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by myself before speaking and begin by stating their name for record keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. A reminder, personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule will result in a move from the virtual public hearing. Please ensure your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in any other activity during the hearing. But if you're having a drink or eating a snack, that's not gonna disrupt this. We'll keep you alive. Failure to maintain visibility may cause your remove from the meeting live stream. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me this afternoon. And I know I did see the author of the bill, Senator Telo Titigui. I know I have other senators, colleagues that will be joining. But we'll just move along. We do have the folks that were here last time. We have Mr. Jose San Augustine from Veterans Commission. We have Tim Ull, and we do have Mr. Tim Ogden this afternoon. And I know Lester is here also. We have Director Lester from BBMR. And we have Mrs. Lucia Perez from the Office of Veterans Affairs. And with that, and folks, and for the people who are left off with needing to hear from the administrator of the Office of Veterans Affairs. I see another senator is coming on board. Senator Brown should be coming on board. So with that, Senator Telo, I'm gonna allow you to do an opening and basically give a quick summary of your bill, please. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, again, for hosting this meeting to ensure that we get everybody to the table that needs to be here to make comments. It helps us as legislatures to make our sound decisions on this. But you know, Alpha Day to you and everyone that's here. And thank you for reconvening this public hearing on Bill 249-36, which began on March 4th, March 4, 2020. Mr. Chair, for the benefit of the listening audience, Bill 249 amends the FY22 Budget Act, Public Law 36-54, by proposing to exempt the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs from the Bureau Budget and Management Research Allotment Release Control Authority. As I stated during the public hearing on March 4th, Mr. Chair, and per guidance offered by Legal Bureau following its review of Bill 249, I intend to work with your committee to amend the measures so that the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs is added to the list of agencies covered under 5GCA, Section 1303.1. This approach will clear up any confusion or misrepresentation of the bill's intent as the amendment would codify the allotment release exemption from the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs going forward. Mr. Chair, Bill 249 also authorizes the Veterans Office to access any funds that were appropriated to the agency through the FY21 Budget Act, Public Law 35-99, and which remain unspent. And based on the information BBMR provided in a revised fiscal note on Bill 249, and as statements made during the public hearing a couple of weeks ago, a total of 731,692 was made available to the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs for FY2021. The amount includes 581,692 appropriated by this legislature, and 150,000 from BBMR was said to be transferred to the governor's office. The legislature authorized, Mr. Chair, in the budget bill, a total transfer level of 300,000 from the governor to the Veterans Affairs. BBMR informed the legislature that the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs total expenditures for FY2021 was $617,045.75, which included a non-budgeted obligation of $97,111.21 for labor settlement claims, leaving a balance of 114,664.75 unaccounted for. And, Mr. Chair, as I reviewed the last meeting we had on March 4th, I wanted to make sure that I heard directly from Lester Carlson that the labor settlement claim of 97,000 was included in the 617 that they provided us for expenditures for FY21. So, Mr. Chair, if you look at the addition to that, you'll see that there is 114,664.75 unaccounted for and not like an empty account. So, Mr. Chair, while I acknowledged that the 150,000 transferred from the governor's office wasn't the Guam Veterans Office to begin with, I also recognize the Veterans Office had to use FY22 funding to pay a GPA bill for a prior year obligation in the amount of 3,588. During the public hearing, we were all made aware that the veterans themselves about the many challenges facing Guam veterans, which are attributed to the lack of resources. A situation which, according to testimony offered at the initial hearing, leads the agent to rely on volunteers and to beg for paint and trash cans to get their job done. You know, Mr. Chair, if approved, Bill 249 will ensure the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs budget, including funds transferred to the agency, is allocated in a manner that will strengthen its ability to support our veterans with the proper resources, procure much-needed supplies and equipment, and ensure regular maintenance of facilities under its jurisdiction. So, Mr. Chair, Bill 249 is a small but important way for our local government to honor the services of our veterans. And I want to make it very clear that to some agencies, $12,000 a month that is set aside on reserve is quite a bit for this office. It may not be for the Port Authority or other agencies, but for this particular office, Mr. Chair. Setting aside $12,000 of an appropriation that we gave to the Veterans Office should not be done when there's so much more to be done for the veterans. So, C. Just Mossing, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to present these additional comments on Bill 249, as well as I did send you a copy of the FOIA request that I had sent to BBMR discussing some of the concerns and numbers. And they too have come back. Mr. Chair, you received that email, I think I, yes, gave it to all those senators, showing that there is, Mr. Chair. And it's good to know that the ASO is showing $114,000 in that account. So, I'm glad we brought this up. And thank you, Mr. Chair, again, for making sure everyone comes here to the table so we can discuss this.
Yes, and thank you, Senator Telo, and for the folks on the Zoom. You can see the documents mentioned that was requested by Senator Telo, and their response is on our Google Drive. Now, we have Mr. Ogden here, the administrator for the Office of Veterans Affairs. I know he has a staff here, but I would assume that we will begin with Mr. Ogden. Sir, Mr. Director. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Senator Telo Titigui, Senator Joanne Brown. I don't see Senator, but Speaker Terlai. And for the veterans that testified on March 4th, whether it was in favor or not in support of this bill. There's a couple of things that I want to discuss or reply to that was said in the last hearing. Couple of things is the state of the PD Cemetery and the East Higatna Navy Cemetery is generational. Failures of my predecessors and previous government entities, administrations, that failed to put the Veterans Office here on Guam and the veteran community a priority. In regards to volunteers, nobody here in this office is begging for anybody to come down and help or request for supplies. These kind-hearted people in the veteran community have come on their own fruition because they see that we need help. And I just want to thank the governor for allowing us to have the largest budget in over a decade. We, yes, we have a lot of things that we need to fix. I'll have you know that we are currently procuring all the things that we need to get done. We currently have a full staff down at the cemetery. Eight employees that have finally been processed. Understanding government processes, the time that it takes to get people harder, we finally got all eight. National Association of State.
Mr. Ogden, I think we're having some technical difficulties from your side.
Okay, here we go.
Okay, there you go. Let's try it one more time.
So, we just returned from the National Association of State Veteran Directors, right? In Virginia, in DC. To answer the question, yes, that was planned. We submitted that in January 14th. This is a biannual conference. We attempted twice before to attend this, and we finally had some money to do it. Thankfully, to BBMR and our working with the administration to get us to go there. This is how important that conference is. We were able to secure a pre-approved grant for the PD Cemetery between the tune of seven and eight million dollars. We've also were able to secure and pre-approved a grant for the East Higatna Navy Memorial Cemetery of three to four million dollars, which we are finalizing. We sat for two hours with the Undersecretary of the Veterans Affairs, the National Director for Cemeteries, and their staff to hammer this out. So, the notion of we're not doing anything at this state office, I say no. We are doing everything we can with what we have. We are moving forward in line with this administration's vision for the veterans and the veterans community. With that being said, at this time, we are not in support of this bill. 36, we're working well, our partners, Director Lester Carlson. They are allowing us the monies needed today to get things done. And we hope that the legislature would be able to increase that budget come November 23 with the administration. We do have monies. And we're spending it. We're gonna spend all of it. So, I thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak. I'm here for any questions, but you know, as mentioned by the senators' last session, that our budgeting is soon to be coming up. And I'm more than willing to answer all the questions at that time regarding operations and whatever else they want to ask. Or they can come down to the cemetery or myself, and we can talk about it prior. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Ogden, Director, I got very simple questions. Number one, I understand what you mentioned is that you went to the conference, and you were able to secure pre-approved loans to take care of, or grants to take care of the cemetery in PD and the cemetery in East Higatna. And then that attuned to about close to 12 million dollars. Now, what would be the catch to that? And so that when we look at the budget, we're gonna anticipate what we need to do to help you. We want to make sure the Veterans Affairs Office succeeds. Because, and then at the same token, maybe you can, I hate to ask this, but maybe you can give us a little bit? Because, you know, I'm a strong believer, the reason this bill was created was because there was an assumption, or a safe assumption, or a good assumption, that you need the money, you need the money to survive. And I'm in full support of the Veterans Affairs getting a clean bill of sale. You know, do what you need to do. But I want to make sure too, first, that what you're mentioning is grants you got. I've never heard about any grants for the Veterans Affairs. This will be the first time. So, I'm very happy to hear that, but I'd like to know about it. And I think the people who are, I think Senator Telo and Senator Brown and everybody else watching this Zoom, this hearing, would like to know about it so that we know that the Veterans Affairs Office is actually in better shape than it's ever been. We have to admit that, that's one. But I would like you to basically tell us about it more. Because you came and broke it up, and I was just trying to hear what was coming in. But if you can tell us more about it so that we can understand, because I believe that this bill's intention was to help you, to help the Veterans Office. It's not for anything else. It's to make sure that you've got the financial means to do what you need to do. And then I look forward to, but at the same token, if you're saying you've got additional funding, and you're gonna be way ahead of the ballgame, is to make sure you got the right funding and you're able to fulfill the full approval of the grants, and you're able to do what you need to do to upgrade and fix up and basically get the Veterans Office going. So, maybe you can explain all that. And I think that's what we've been all hoping for, if you could, please, Mr. Ogden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as I mentioned, at this conference, we sat down with the Undersecretary of Veterans, the National Director for State Cemeteries and National Cemeteries and their staff, architects and engineers and grant managers. So, we were pre-approved. We were able to secure a preapproval for the PD Cemetery, seven to eight million dollars. There's some Ts and Is that we need to cross, and a little bit of validation on cost of goods to the RACs during this whole period. So, that's why they gave us a flex of about $1 million to iron out any periods on the estimation, the estimates that we're looking at. What encompasses in the PD grant? We are going to expand within the current footprint due to the lack of property that we have access to at this time. So, we agreed on the table that we will build capacity for five years, right? So, right now, currently, we have about two years plus five with this grant. So, seven years of capacity. And during that time, within the next years, we'll be engaging in the planning of a 10- to 20-year plan for the veterans cemetery expansion. Whether it's gonna be adjacent properties or in a new location, this all will still coincide with the expansion of the PD Cemetery. In that grant, we have the renovation of the chapel, the administration building, the expansion of the maintenance building. And...
We gotta pause on your end there, Mr. Ogden. Mr. Ogden, you're still there? I think you froze.
Okay, we're gonna have to, I'm on my phone, that's why you see two of me, sir. So, it's getting us back in. Just a moment, it's connecting. This is one of the issues that we're working to work to get fixed in here.
All right, I appreciate it. We'd like to get that on. I'd like to also recognize that we're joined by co-sponsor of the bill, Speaker Theresa Lai, and we have also Senator Tony Adonis also joining us. So, once we get Mr. Ogden back on, we also like to, I'd like to request that we get everything that's going on in writing from Mr. Ogden. Everything in detail, exactly, similar to a trip report, but not necessarily a trip report, Lucia. But everything that's going on that we can actually hold our hands, this is what's happening. I see Tom, I see Mr. Ogden is...
Here we go.
There you go, Greg, let's try that one more time. Thank you.
Yeah, so, within the front, that all has to do with all the renovation and upgrade of the facilities, the crypts, the... What's the word I'm looking for? The destruction or the taking down of the Leaning Tower of Crypts so we can erect more in a more correct infrastructure and foundation so they won't lean. So, part of that grant is erecting more crypts, renovation of the chapel, the administration building, and expansion of the intercourt, right? We're getting more and more, and the building that we're on is just not, doesn't meet our capacity of operations. With the East Higatna, it was kind of a tricky situation because it's not an active cemetery. So, non-active cemeteries are not eligible for grant. So, we came up with our conversations that we are going to erect at a minimum one column barium for crypts or a column barium for the urn, whichever can fit on the current footprint down there. We are going to harden the grounds abutting the river, the Higatna River. I believe that's the Higatna River exit. And then reinforce and harden the high watermark where it abuts our property or whatever the engineers come up with to keep the guns intact. We are gonna erect concrete fence line, new flagpoles, and a meditation pavilion down at the Naval Morne Cemetery. So, these are the things that are included in the grant, both grants. We applied for not just one, and we were pre-approved for both. I want to thank my staff here that have worked tirelessly to prepare us, not only for the grant but for the conference, so that we're ready to play ball when we sat at the table.
Okay, you got more folks for Veterans Services, the VSOs or what they call them? Resource officers? Mr. Ogden, how are we doing with your...
Veterans Service Representatives? Yes, so thankfully, we secured, we're gonna put 10 individuals into veteran VSO training to get accredited, and we are going to hire six of those. And the other four will be volunteer assigned to assist other veteran organizations throughout time.
Right, thank you. We also have Senator Sabina Perez that have joined us. I'm gonna go ahead and ask Senator Telo if you want to ask a question or you want to be the last, and we'll move along with the other colleagues. Senator Telo, okay, you got connected back, okay, good. Would you like to ask a question now, Senator Telo, or you want to ask last? Are you gonna unmute, Senator Telo?
You think how long we've been doing this, and I still forget to press mute sometimes?
Not a problem. Do you want to ask now or you want to ask later?
No, I think I will because a lot of it has to do with the funding, Mr. Chair. And I think I'll start off with that because I did, and my colleagues. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I did send my colleagues the FOIA request to show exactly how much money is there. First, you know, congratulations, Tim, on your trip and being able to find some funding and grant money. The question is, how soon will we receive this funding? It said there's 1.5 million that they're giving you to try and, you know, correct what needs to be done in order to get the seven point, the seven or eight million dollars. So, how soon will the veterans be able to see this money coming in?
Thank you, Senator Titigui. So, we are submitting that as soon as we finish cross-doning our Ts because of the cost of goods have changed since the initial. So, that's why they gave us the flex of our final number, seven and eight million dollars, right? For the PD Cemetery and three to four million dollars for the East Higatna Cemetery. So, we're using all of that for the freight costs and cost of goods for the construction or renovations that are gonna be had.
So, when is the money...
So, okay, so, the deadline to submit is July. The awarding is in August, so that monies will be available whenever the VA drops that into our funding.
Okay, so it looks like it in July. Well, I greatly appreciate that. And, you know, I have to say, Tim, prior directors have done everything they could to possibly at the VA to make it a better place. You know, I wouldn't say, you know, a lot of issues were because a lack of other directors in your position not doing their job. I think everybody did do a really good job. It was just a lack of funding that they weren't able to get. And that's what this bill is gonna do, is to ensure that it doesn't matter which administration, you know, is in play, that moving forward, I mean, it could be a new administration next year. We just want to make sure that the veterans get every appropriation that has been appropriated to them. And one of the biggest concerns we had, and I don't know, Lucia, please chime in because I know that you oversee the accounting perspective of this. And but, and this was consistent with my reform request that was sent to BBMR. And so, I have a question. What is the status of the Guam Veterans Appropriation Reserve Balance of 98,446 as reflected in the FY21 Appropriation Reserve Report for the period ending September 30th, 2021? What is the status of that money?
So I, I'm trying to look at what exactly you're looking at. And you're looking at the ninety-eight thou- ninety-eight thousand?
Yes, ninety-eight thousand four hundred and forty-six that was reflected in the uh balance or in the report on September thirty.
Excuse me, Senator Tello, um, for, for the, the VA Office responding, please identify who you are so that everybody knows it's, it's Miss Lucia Perez that's responding, okay? Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. All right, so this is Lucia Perez with the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. So I believe the question was related to ninety-eight thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars, which is labor claim payment, correct?
Yes.
That was question number five. Okay. Yes, we did. That was a claim that was filed. It was not part of the original budget as stated, um, as Director Carlson had explained and maybe even the director. This was initiated uh by the employees at the Guam Veterans Cemetery. Because it was a federal Department of Labor investigation, we were not able to disclose to anyone. Um, even the.
I'm sorry, Lucia, I, I need to hold you off. I think we're off, you're, you're on a different subject matter. Um, let, let me go. Uh, there was a appropriation reserve report that was submitted to the legislature. And this report was all the way up to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, so it's the end of the fiscal year. And in that reserve balance for the Office of Veterans Affairs was ninety-eight thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. And my question is, what is the status of that money? Now, as far as the ninety-seven that you were referring to on the labor claims, um, I'm not referring to that because that was already incorporated in the expenditures that was given to us at six hundred and um six hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-five seventy-five. So again, my question is, what is the status of the ninety-eight thousand four hundred and forty-six that was reflected in the FY twenty-one Appropriation Reserve Report for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one?
So again, that, that money balance should still be in the account. We have not drawn down on it.
Okay, but yet, um, it was your letter to the legislature, Lucia, reporting that um there was a GPA balance uh from, from prior year obligation, um, and you were using FY twenty twenty-two funding to pay for that three thousand, um, I think it was three thousand something, uh, three thousand plus in power bill. And you are using money from the FY twenty-two budget, and that's why you reported to us. If that was the case, why didn't you use the ninety-eight thousand four hundred and forty-six that was still in, in a um reserve?
So what happened with that, just like you said, when it comes to payment utilities, we try and stick just based on that object class. And therefore, when that notice was submitted, it was to say that we were using the utility payment account, not the reserve account. So we're trying to, what we were doing here was trying to fix everything according to the object class. So when questions come up as to why was this not paid or what was this invoice, it's easy to see that if it's a power payment, it reflects all under the, the power account. The reserve money is there and BB and Mar has informed us that at the time that if our account, say for example, goes into a negative for some reason for utilities, we can put in a budget modification request to get money out of that reserve over to the utility account.
Okay.
So when you see that notice, it was just to ensure that monies that were paid came out of the utilities account, the reserve account.
Okay.
Uh, I tend to be very frugal in how we use the reserve for, for things because there are other items that were coming up, such as ordering of a lowering device that was going to be more costly for us. And that's where the ninety-eight thousand was being held on to.
Okay, um, well, the justification to that, it, it doesn't make any sense if you ask me. If you needed funding to pay for a prior year obligation in twenty twenty-one and you had ninety-eight thousand dollars left over from FY twenty-one, you should be using that money instead of going after FY twenty-two budget. If the funds were expended, you know, um, during that time or, or across the balance, so um BB Mar on the record stated that there is no unexpended balances for FY twenty-one and that the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs had expended a total of six hundred and seventeen oh four five um, oh four five point seventy-five have included labor claim amount of ninety-seven. This is what you were talking about earlier, ninety-seven thousand one hundred and eleven point twenty-one. Is a legislative approval required for labor claim settlements? Um, or was the legislature notified of this prior year's debt, uh, debt pursuant to Public Law thirty-five dash ninety-nine, Chapter thirteen, Section twenty, which is the same language found in FY twenty-two budget, requiring agencies to inform the legislature prior to using the current appropriation for old debt? Then this is regarding that uh labor claim.
So to answer your question, Senator, no, I was not informed by the Department of Administration if I had to make notice to the, to the legislature or anyone else.
Hmm. Okay, um, so BB Mar stated in March eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-two, response to my FOIA request that the remaining balance of a hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty-four as of nine thirty-one twenty-one from the one hundred and fifty thousand transferred by the governor is still reflected in the AS four hundred fiscal uh financial system within Guam's OVA's accounts. According to BB Mar, these funds are currently held in reserves pending a request from the Guam Office of Veterans to release such fund, funds along with justification. So what actions have been taken to, to apply any portion of that one hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and forty, uh, forty-six balance to cover per projects connected? One hundred and fifty thousand funding requests from uh Guam Office of Veterans Affairs submitted to the Community Block Grant Program, which was denied. If I'm not mistaken, uh, the Community Block Grant was denied for the veterans, and it was a request of a hundred and fifty. So what now is, is veterans gonna do with that one hundred and fourteen, fourteen thousand six hundred and forty? What is the status?
So what we're doing is that we are working already with um GSA, we've reached out to them to ask them what are the proper procurement steps to ensure that everything is accounted for and done properly to avoid any delays in rolling out the project? So we are provide, putting together a scope of work. And in that scope of work, we have to identify everything that is going to be done in the chapel, down to the nuts and bolts of what's gonna happen. And this includes the repair of bathrooms to make it ADA compliant, changing out of doors, uh, removing the termite-infested uh wood and replacing with proper areas. So that's one step. We've already started to get price quotations for the materials that we know are gonna be needed based on a preliminary review by Department of Public Works on the items that are gonna be done. So that's where we're at. That's why we have not gone out yet to BB Mar and requested for Budget Ma to transfer the monies out of the reserve into contractual. Until that project is completed and we know for sure much is going to be spent and where it's going to be spent at, then that budget request or modification goes to BB Mar. Because before anything can happen um in my dealing, BB Mar and very, you know, strict for a purpose. They want to know whether we've reached out to all the rest that we need to. They want to know if we've exhausted all the, the rules and regulations and law of buying local and, you know, all that good stuff, right? So that's where we're at.
Okay. Thank you, Lucia. Uh, Mr. Chair, um, I have several other questions, but I'm gonna allow my uh colleagues to go ahead and answer any questions that they may have and uh look at the budget, but uh, and I'll just close toward the end. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And we have um the colleagues that were here, uh, we have Senator Brown. You're the first colleague in, ma'am. Uh, you have any questions you'd like to post to Mr. Huggins or the Office of Veterans Affairs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just hope that we get things cleared up with regards to the funding. I mean, you know, the Veterans Affairs is an important operation, but it's not a mega-agency. I mean, it's not a super-large agency, so I think our ability to be able to count for the funds and where they're going and how they're being used. I mean, I, I don't think it should be that complicated. I mean, we can do all this, but I, I don't think the public and the veterans probably care about all those dynamics, but it shouldn't really be that complicated. I do want to comment on a few things because of the director's tone. You know, I wish we could all just fly in and, you know, I, I, I mean, if we want people to believe that all we gotta do is fly in a trip and we're gonna get eight or nine million dollars and that's all it takes is our own gravitas and wonderful. But for the rest of us and, and who've had to deal and hear these issues, I mean, I, I know it's election year. I know everyone wants to take credit for everything under the sun. Um, but I, I think there's an expectation of performance to whatever level we can demonstrate we're doing the work. I drove by the Veterans Cemetery yesterday because I normally stop there uh just to let the director know, and the gates were locked and they should have been opened. And there were two cars waiting outside in front of the cemetery and I just simply because of time, you know, had to keep driving to get to the office, but those are the type of things that matter. The maintenance of the cemetery matters to make sure that it's clean, that the vegetation's properly trimmed, to make sure we don't have lawnmowers running over, you know, the markers that are very common. You know, my godfather's marker's been there for this upcoming year, this year, this summer. You know, for fifty years, it's, it's, it's been beaten uh with a lot of lawnmowers. Uh, that's what matters to the families, making sure that the veterans get the services that they need to, to help facilitate if there benefits out there that they're eligible for, that they're not aware of. To help facilitate that so that we can get them the services that they need, the services that they're eligible for and what they've earned. I mean, that's really basic. Uh, you know, we can trip over ourselves right now trying to say who's the best, closest, who's a veteran, who's the family of a veteran, who matters more, who cares more? Uh, and yet, over the years, we've seen some very basic issues have fallen by the wayside. So if we think we've reached perfection, sorry, when we can't get the gate open on time, that to me is an issue. And that's not the first time that's happened in the last couple of years. And I want to make sure that when we have, you know, um funeral services and burials, because I brought this up and certainly, Mr. Director, was before your time, but it was during this administration. When we have a veteran that's being laid to rest without proper acknowledgement and proper services, uh, you know, and assistance from the Veterans Affairs Office when the families made the request, that's kind of stuff that matters. So we can, you know, shroud ourselves in our greatness and our gravitas and how wonderful we are and the greatest governors and governor, whatever it is we want to talk about. But we want to make sure and let the veterans, because in time, they'll let us know. They'll let us know whether or not the services meet their standard. That's how we measure our performance. Uh, and I certainly hope that things continue to improve. If you've been given more resources, thank the Lord that you have been, because many have not had the opportunity. And right now, it sounds like money's falling from the sky because we're hiring left and right, up and down. So, gosh, if you've got more personnel, good for you, because many prior to you did not have those resources available to assist them. So I really don't have much more to say, Mr. Chair. I, I gotta step back because I have another commitment to attend to, but I just wish we could get back to the focus of that. Uh, you know, and stop tearing each other down about who did better and who didn't, who's who and who's what. I mean, Mr. St. Augustine's here, Joe St. Augustine, who served in that capacity, who himself is a veteran and a proud, you know, served proud. And you yourself, Mr. Chairman, I mean, the list, the list goes on in this community. Uh, and, and we keep hearing the same thing over and over and over again on, on what should be basic services and responses that we, we should be able to provide for. When I see and hear that, when I hear the complaining, you know, taper off, uh, then I'd say, great job. Uh, when we get there and, and it happens, I'm happy. I'm happy. I think we have a lot to gain, but I have to tell you, Mr. Chair, this is not that complicated with regards to finances, accounting for it, demonstrating how and where it's getting spent and how we're directly providing the services to our veterans community. So with that, Mr. Chair, I don't have any further comments. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to comment. I still support this bill. If the director doesn't support getting uh the funds released, so there's no reserve put aside, that's his choice to do it. But I think we'd like to see that the money's not restricted so that uh they have the ability, at least that doesn't become the issue because that's always the issue, that's always the explanation. Our performance in these positions have to do with our capability of working also with what we have because there's no endless stream of money. Uh, but if that's always used as the excuse why we are or not doing things, I mean, that doesn't say much for our leadership, so I, I hope we see greater performance. But you know, when I hear this kind of stuff at a public hearing, it disturbs me because that's not why we're here. I hope that we're not dissing this bill because of the sponsor because his administration reps are very good lately at doing that. If it's not the right sponsor, then all of a sudden, hey, we don't like this bill. If I, if I'm being given an appropriation to run my agency, by all means, I want to make sure I have the ability to access those funds so I can deliver on my job, and that doesn't become a reason why my department is not performing. So with that, Mr. Chair, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Um, Madam Speaker, do you have any uh questions you want to post to the, to Mr. Huggins or his staff?
Yes, thank you, and, and um welcome back from your trip. Um, thank you for the report. Um, all right, so my understanding of this bill, if we, if we um, well, the main gist of the bill that I, I am very much in support of is allowing the Veterans Affairs Office to utilize its full appropriation when it, when it sees fit, pretty much, right? Hopefully, early on in the year, if they have capital improvements to make or capital or equipment purchases, all of that that they've proposed to do during a fiscal year, that they would be able to do that early on in the fiscal year. And um, uh, you know, not wait until the end uh to kind of beg for the reserve to be released, right? Or um, and if you, uh, although I do support um the checks and balances that BB Mar provides to all the agencies, I think, I think that's very appropriate. I believe every agency should be doing that as well, as Ms. Perez stated, and I agree with that. Every agency has to incorporate that, and this is, so this is of course a, it's a big power that's being given, and it's been given to thirteen other entities in the government to say that, uh, you know, you are responsible enough and we are giving you this kind of uh ability to use all of your funds, not have any of it withheld. And simple as that for me. It's like, do you want the ability to use all of your funds or do you want some of it to be withheld for whatever purpose? Um, uh, and so there's two things kind of, I guess, uh, I want clarification on. So one is this, um, first of all, congratulations on, I, I, if I understand what you're saying, um, Mr. Huggins, Director, is that you've got a grant for seven to eight million dollars, but we haven't submitted the application yet until July and the award is in August. So is that money something you've been awarded or you, you're hoping to be awarded? Or did I, did I miss something there? If you could clarify that?
Thank you for the question, uh, Speaker Turlai. Uh, so they pre-approved the application, but due to the fluctuation of the cost of goods and freight, we had to redo the numbers. Deadline for submission of the grant is July first. Awarding is in August. And then whenever they deposit the monies, I, I believe, I think it's end of October or whatever the federal time for deposit of, of funds. Um, I hope answers.
All right, so you believe this money is a, a pretty set? It's not something you're, you're pending award. It's you, you're set on that. You will be receiving seven to eight million dollars for use during FY twenty-three? Director? Ms. Perez?
Um, okay, so.
I got it, I got it.
He's coming back on.
Yeah.
Speaker?
Yes, Director?
Okay. So, yes, reasons for that number, they, is the fluctuation of cost of goods and freight costs. So we just have to clean up the numbers. We sat with the Undersecretary for the VA and the Director of NCA and the grants managers and their A&amp;E staff, and they're really helpful because they haven't seen anybody in over a decade. Well, strike that. They saw Joe, Jose St. Augustine, like, five years ago. So, thank you, Joe.
Can you confirm whether that's for FY23 or FY22, and if that's concrete or you're still pending approval?
Okay, once we submit that, the award will be this August, so that'll be FY23.
All right. Are you getting the award or do we not know yet?
No, no, we're pre-approved. We're going to get the money.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get, yes or no. Yes, okay, great, thanks. And so, so some of what I'm hearing, I guess, is that maybe the Veterans Affairs Office doesn't need this money or access to all of their appropriations as the bill's proposing because it's getting a grant for seven to eight million. It received $500,000 from Bill 227's passage. And because, I don't know, their current budget, I guess they're saying, is sufficient and that they will take it up at the next budget hearing. And that's what's confusing to me, I guess. So if you're thinking to come into the next budget hearing and saying we need more money, but saying today that we don't need the money that we have right now, I guess that's just a little confusing to me. And, yeah, I'm going to allow you time to clarify that. But we continue to see, and I still have heard some of your plans for the improvement of the cemetery, and I'm very glad for that, but we continue to hear about these issues, being very persistent. And so, I don't know, I guess, this is the first time I've heard an agency say they don't really need their funds, but I can see if you're getting grants and you're going to get the $500,000 from Bill 227 right away, and you're able to spend them in, well, that grant's not till FY23. I don't know. Well, this was a bill to make a permanent, permanent ability for the Veterans Affairs Office to access all of its appropriation in the fiscal year at the timing that it decides. Okay, so Director, you weren't here the last time, but we did receive your written testimony, and I had asked about number three in your response. It says, "The allotment reserve is in place to cover any shortfalls incurred by the department at the year end." The reserve to cover shortfalls. I'm not sure, if you can clarify that, why would you have shortfalls at the end of the year? And the reserve, when we give you your budget in the beginning of the year, it's based on what you've asked for, and supposedly, you allocate that out, how you're going to spend it. And so I'm trying to figure out why would there be shortfalls at the end of the year? And why, yeah, you're, I don't get that. How would we have shortfalls at the end of the year if you're planning to use your full budget and, you know, you use it responsibly? And don't you plan to use your entire budget?
So, Speaker, you're frozen on our end.
Oh. Okay. Can you hear me, Joe? Senator Joe? Okay.
Yes.
Now you're moving.
There you go.
Okay. I...
Your question, to the point, this is Lucy, your question, the tail end I heard. Why would you... Or the concept of being short, having short, having money in reserves?
Ms. Paris, if you guys have a phone, if you can link up with us by phone, because I think we're having problems with your computer connection. If you can go by phone, and then we can hear you a lot better, even if we don't see the face, at least we can hear a lot better. We would appreciate that, because earlier, I think, Ms. Ogden was speaking through the phone, and it was clear. Maybe we can work that.
So we're using my phone now. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
All right. The speakers, to the speaker's point about item number or point number three of the allotment reserve is in place to cover any shortfall by the department year. False. That doesn't make sense, right?
Right.
Line item of what you know you're going to spend your money on. With that said, the director and most certainly me, we did not expect that when we were assigned to the VA that we were going to have a Department of Labor audit. So that's a shortfall. We did not expect that that audit happened before. And US Department of Labor is going to be even more stringent and penalties and degrees with me, that we need to make sure that there is a reserve for reasons like that. I am not saying, and please do not say, that I am purposely going and budgeting for a negative balance. That does not make sense.
That's exactly why I am giving you the opportunity to clarify that number three, because that's exactly what it sounds like. I'll be very frank with you. That's what it sounds like. It sounds like we're planning for a shortfall.
Right.
Meaning we're going to over-expend, and it makes no sense. Or we're going to plan to come in in the next fiscal year.
Right. But, you know, because it's less than, right, under Department of Labor. Now, I'm crossing because I'm following, we're following everything the Department of Labor said in terms of making sure we know how models.
Right. So what did you, what did you do? That's one good example, all right? So we give you a budget, you plan to use it, and then you come up, then something comes up unexpected, and you decide to spend it on that instead, or you're told by BBMR to spend it on that instead, whichever happens. You know, you're giving up something that you said was very critical to the Veterans Affairs Office budget, right? And I guess, yeah, that's why it just doesn't make sense to me, that we would say, hold off for some unexpected expenditures when every single expenditure that you've said is critical, right? Because your budget is so small. And I would, every single part of that is critical, and the sooner that you can, you know, use it, the better, right? Especially if we're talking about equipment or improvements to the cemetery, all of that. But so, Director, can you clarify your statement about FY23? That you said you're going to come into the budget discussions and do what? Oh, sorry. Yeah, there you are. Yeah. And do what differently than what we're talking about today? Are you going to ask for this power in FY23's budget, but you don't want this power today? Or what are you suggesting?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
I wasn't going to sit in here and get banged up by things of operational nature that happened prior to my arrival here. We're just, we're here to share what we've been doing. And no, Mrs. Speaker, amount that has been allotted to us, and we have not been denied any request for any unforeseen circumstances that we need additional funding as, as, as shown when the Governor provided the $150,000 transfer of funds for us. So these are, you know, we have submitted our budgets, and we plan to spend it. We have a plan to spend every single penny.
Okay.
And I've seen no reason, system is not broken for, at least for our, thus far, and I've been here for a little over, almost two years. And I don't see a challenge with how we're operating now, other than not receiving the funding. And I've never said we didn't need the money, and, you know, Senator Brown's saying that it's Christmas and money's falling from the sky, but no, it's not. We're just in the right place at the right time for these monies to be available. And we need to build on what we're receiving now with our infrastructure, lay the foundation for years to come. We appreciate the generosity of the budget that we have now. But after all of this, the grants and the other funding, once that's expired, we still need to maintain a budget that will help us with our, maximize our capabilities as an agency and deliver those services to the veterans and the veteran community. And I just wanted to state that, you know, I am a veteran. I'm a retired veteran. So I take this operation and our service personally. So, excuse my passion and my desire to make it right for so many years of, you know, lack of support. But I just look forward to the continuing support that we're getting now. I mean, everybody knows the life that we live today, we've got to thank a veteran for that.
I thank you for your service, and I am very grateful for your passion, Mr. Director. I'm very grateful for your passion, and I am very grateful that we are going to get some more money from the grant that you've secured, or I hope that's secured. It's still not clear to me. And that, but two things. Yeah, again, we're just talking about if you want to spend your money right away or you want to wait, you know, and have it allocated out, reserved, you know, a percentage of it reserved out, you know, so you can't spend it. And are the needs that you've proposed for your budget critical or are they not? Can they wait? That's really the question. And, you know, and how prepared are you? So of course, I agree with Ms. Paris that, you know, we weren't, we didn't have the bids ready or whatever. We're not doing the purchase orders because we're still waiting for one thing or another. That's a whole other, that's a whole other issue. So what we're trying to do is not micromanage you, but to give you that power that if you can get everything ready upfront, that you've got the money upfront. You know, if it's going to take you an entire fiscal year to get it done, then that's up to you, you know? But at least for the veterans who are watching the Veterans Affairs Office, they will know that all the money that we've appropriated is available to you. Period. That no one's holding it. No one's telling you, you've got to do it later. You can do it when you are ready, and that you should, you know, be accountable to be ready to use it. Can you tell me for the $500,000 available to you from Bill 227, do you have a plan for that? That was just signed by the Governor a couple of days ago.
Yes, and we're thankful for the additional funding because if, you know, the Veterans Administration is a three, has three pillars, which is national cemeteries, benefits, and health. This bill, this law now that transfers $500,000 will give us the ability to stand up the third pillar of Veterans Administration, which would be the medical and health. It will be designed to assist and liaison with all the medical and health issues that are occurring with the CBAC and the communication between the local veterans in our area to whoever it is that they call, that one eight-hit number that never calls back. We are putting together a program in partnership with the rest of the state directors that have existing infrastructure, this type of capability, service the veteran community, which we are going to mirror. And yes, I do have a plan. We've submitted our planning in accordance with the request. And, you know, like I said, yes, it's, it's, that it's rain money, but it's not going to be here next year, right? So we're prudent. We're going to be prudent in our spending, and we're going to be accountable for our actions. We just want to improve the service that the veterans deserve.
Glad to speak. Thank you. Yes, thank you. So the plan, we saw one when we passed the bill, but we also amended the bill to include that the money can be spent for burials or for the cemetery, right? So will the plan be adjusted to accommodate that or to make any repairs to the cemetery or buy any equipment or anything like that?
Absolutely, ma'am. If that was included, I don't recall seeing that in the, when it was signed into law. I didn't receive the copy of the final. But if that is the case, then absolutely, for it to be a supplement to operations and to the equipment that is needed for operation within the offices with our... We need, this is a really great addition, supplement, because we're getting out of the Stone Age, bringing into information highway. We are transitioning from manual to digital. This is, this is like, I am so excited for this transition and for the years to come for the veterans of Guam. We'll have more accountability. We'll have ease of access to information, case management. We'll be able to, you know, provide better customer service, which is the goal for everybody. I guess everybody here would not deny the fact that that's the main goal for us, is to provide service to the veterans that are eligible for benefit.
So we're hoping that the $500,000 becomes totally available to you upfront, that you can spend it immediately if you have these needs that are immediate and critical and that they're, you know, not going to be reserved or wait till next year or things like that. Just because from where I see it, you know, that's, that's what I hear from veterans. It's like the need is critical. It has to be done now. They don't want it to wait until the end of the fiscal year. They don't want it to wait till next fiscal year. So we've got these resources available, and yeah, so I agree. It should be, it should be used upfront if possible. And I just want to give you those tools. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director, and thank you, Ms. Paris.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator, do you have any questions for me?
No questions. Thank you.
All right, Senator Paris?
All right, thank you, Mr. Paris. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Care. Thank you to everyone who's here. Yeah, so what this bill would do would actually give more power to the Veterans Affairs to utilize their full budget. And, you know, just hearing some of the discussions so far, it seems like maybe we're, you know, generally, agencies are operating on 85% of the budget. And when it comes time towards the end of the year, then the release of that 15, remaining 15% is given. But in hearing, you know, and in thinking from a procurement perspective, so you have a lot of projects coming up. Do you think it probably is more beneficial to have access to this considering you are expanding the cemeteries and some of these capital improvement projects? I think maybe perhaps this is something to really consider, you know, because it's very difficult to get procurement done, you know, the last and, you know, towards the end of a fiscal year. So, you know, I'm really, you know, probably like posing this question to the Director again, you know, is this something that you can really use during this time when you're going to undergo some pretty big capital improvement projects?
Thank you, Senator. Well, that's a good point. But we budgeted for the actions that we're taking now in regards to replacing and repairing and purchasing of equipment and hiring the personnel within the budget, our staffing pattern that we submitted along with the budget for it, and for the, for the infrastructure or CFP projects that are needed. So with, like I mentioned before, we have planned to spend the entire $968,000. You know, whether, and I've managed to date since I've been here for almost two years, the administration and BBMR have been very cooperative and honoring my requests. And I don't see anything currently or for the time I've been here that we should change the system, at least for us. Uh, and I have total confidence that we'll have access to the full budget. And uh, we did budget the entire, so just so we're clear, right? Uh, and, you know, BBMR, but the way the system works now and putting in reserves, that's fine. I plan to spend all of it. It's in my plan.
Yeah, that's
Right, so.
That's, yeah, right, when we have, when when there are budget submittals, but yeah, the timing is more a a concern, I guess, in this case. Um, yeah, if that's something you've thought about deeper is what I'm asking. If there's, if timing is more of an issue for you, yeah.
Well, we all don't have enough time or hours in a day. Uh, and understanding the way the system works, uh, I can't uh, cry over not being in control of the time of the way things process. And I totally understand, Senator, where you're coming from and I get it, cuz uh, you know, we're living it. And uh, we just hope for that we do have that time. I, you know, this time is never on anybody's side when you're, when you're trying to accomplish uh, great things, so uh, I just appreciate the support and uh, we're gonna carry out the plan.
Yeah, and and don't get me wrong, I do believe that, you know, every budget, like everybody who budgets in their own household needs to set aside some money, right, in case for those emergencies that pop up. And um, no, I think, you know, as far as managers of 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 agencies, I think that's a wise thing to do. Um, but if, you know, there's things that really are falling on the wayside, uh, you know, I guess that's really up to discretion of these, of the directors is to figure out is this, this emergency, emergency needs to, needs to be addressed right away rather than, you know, try to, you know, hold off until that time comes towards the end of the fiscal year. So that's something that, you know, perhaps is another consideration. Um, so you mentioned earlier, uh, Director Uggan about, um, you know, the amount of workers that you have. Can you clarify, uh, the, how many do you have on staff as far as veteran service representatives?
We have, currently, we have four full-time uh, veteran service representatives.
Okay, and is that sufficient?
No, it is not. That's why we requested for six more, which uh, we are uh, securing the training as uh, for the accreditation of these individuals. Uh, they're gonna, we're gonna train 10, we're gonna hire 6.
Yeah, so I think that that's great. Um, yeah, I hope maybe you can hire a little bit more. Cuz uh, yeah, I think that's one of the issues too, right, is the the overtime and I don't know if it's related to the
So uh, we we wanna, we could always use more. Uh, but I think to start uh, with us transitioning from manual to to uh, digital and um, being able to have all the resources actually uh, finally to have it. Uh, and the processes will become simpler, uh, and the efficiencies will be greater. So, um, maybe at a later time, we can increase that when we get a bigger building because we don't wanna be stacking people on top of each other like cabinets here. Uh, we wanna maintain uh, uh, maximum capacity within the footprint that we operate in and uh, ensure that we we have efficiency. If if I was to crowd this building with uh, too many people, then we're not gonna be efficient. And right now, uh, my my whole goal i- is to transfer uh, these almost a hu- uh, 50 cabinets that we have here files to make it digital so we can make more space, uh, so we can improve more efficiencies uh, and hire more VSRs at that time.
Okay.
I'm I'm with you on the vision for that. I'm not uh, de- uh, declining that. I'm just saying, we gotta work with what we got for now as we grow. Uh, and then once we get to that point, definitely, we need more VSRs.
Great. Um, thank you for that. Um, another question I have is regarding, you know, how much, what is your uh, finances right now? Uh, as far as like, what what was appropriated last term uh, for this uh, fiscal year and any kind of lapse funds, what is your, what's a total amount that um, Veterans Affairs has?
Oh, there it is. So so you were asking about our FY22, where we stand right now financially as far as what's in the bank?
Yes, including lapsed, any kind of lapse funds from previous um, fiscal years.
Okay, um, I'm gonna have Lucy answer that, she has the data in front of her. Uh, Senator Perez?
Uh, yes, hi, Director Carlson.
Hi, uh, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, we provided the uh, FOIA response um, sent by Senator Tadejwi uh, to everybody on Friday. Uh, I think you were also included. So the information that you're seeking is also on the G drive available to uh, but participating, but more specifically, the information was included in the uh, FOIA response. So it's about 114,000 from FY21 that transfer. Not to be confused with an appropriation. Uh, so mentioned previously that um, 197,000 in FY22 funds for OVA. But it, that was for and uh, capital, travel. And I would like to make a point that seems to be lost on a lot of people here. Nobody begs for the release of money. The, we actually encourage people who have uh, procurement to to begin the procurement process in the beginning of the fiscal year. So that the the request for uh, acquisitions are are done uh, during the course of the fiscal year, not not the 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 whole notion that funds are not available to the end of the fiscal year is is, I'm sorry, but it's flawed. That's not the way it works. The way it works is when you put in a plan, you need to be able to certify that you have funds available before you can go to GSA and get a requisition. So the whole idea is to make sure that you have funds in uh, capital outlay in 450 to support what it is that you're asking for. And those funds are made available in reserve when you're ready to be able to then take the next step and uh, take the vision and put it into play with a solicitation. So we end the response to Senator Tadejwi, which we made available not only to the senators and the OVA staff, but also to Mr. Kundif, Mr. Sinagastin, and Mr. Ono, who took a lot of their time uh, previously to participate in this public hearing. Uh, the the current solvency as the term used by Senator Tadejwi is is very, very good for the Office of Veterans Affairs. They have the money that the governor made available through a transfer in '21, and still the bulk of it is remaining. Uh, they have um, a lot of the funds that they were appropriated in '22 available to them. You know, it's waiting for the actions and as uh, Mr. Uggan mentioned, um, there are uh, redos that have to get done because the 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 planning and the cost for certain things um, has increased over the last few months. So whatever you might have thought with uh, a project was gonna cost you in October, it's not gonna cost you that much money in in March because costs have gone up overall. So, um, the Office of Veterans Affairs and BBMR work very well together. We oppose Bill 249 simply because the tools are there to be able to allow for them to to prosper. There are safeguards. If 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 the funds aren't requested until March, well, the reserves allow for them to be still available. We would prefer that they access the funds in October and November, early in the fiscal year, but sometimes you just have to like, take whatever the budget provides to you and dust off the the cost estimates and resubmit. So, um, there, there is about 114,000 in '21 transferred funds that are outside of the appropriation authority for the gov- for for the legislature, cuz by by, you know, through the the generosity of the governor, she has not rescinded that transfer. But, you know, in theory, she could, but she isn't going to. That wasn't money appropriated by the legislature. It was an authorization for the governor to transfer. There are a lot of differences in those, in those words. And it, and please, that's the whole crux of what Bill 249 does. The resources are available. Period. There doesn't need to be any changes. And I will remind everybody that the Office of Veterans Affairs is a division under the governor's office. You're gonna take uh, the uh, oversight of under the governor's office, away from the governor for 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 reasons that are there uh, to promote their well-being as opposed to, um, you know, what it is that's being perceived. The funds are available. And on top of that, the governor has provided 1.2 million dollars in ARP funding to the Office of Veterans Affairs. And that's not subject to the legislature's uh, transfer authority or anything else. So, please, you know, there's, there's a lot of work that gets done uh, to be able to make an agency's um, efforts come to fruition in line with the appropriations from the legislature. Uh, I also echo Mr. Uggan's comments and I've echoed it from the beginning. I I think that once people take a look at the uh, the effort that we put into in replying and sending that, the FOIA response out on Friday in advance of today's hearing for everybody to disseminate the information, uh, I think we'll be, we we we'll all be in a better place. And I don't think that there's a need for this. So uh, you know, nobody has to wait till the end of the fiscal year, Senator, to access funds for uh, you know, capital acquisitions uh, or any, anything else. Mr. Uggan was correct, the spending plan and the budget allotment schedule that was uh, sent out and provided to the legislature, by the way, you know, um, is is there that shows the planning and the allocation of the budget. Uh, the monies are there, you know, uh, reserves doesn't mean that you can't touch it. Reserves mean we're not gonna, you know, whatever it is that you plan and the legislature approved the fund will still be available to you even if it takes you to May to to be able to get the requisitions uh, put together. So please, you know, uh, help, help, help us, help everybody. We don't, we don't believe we need this and we're spending a lot of time um, at a, at a time, as Mr. Uggan said, when, you know, on you know, there just seems to be more resources uh, available to the Office of Veterans Affairs and not less. And that, and no- nobody is withholding anything from there. Thank you.
All right, so um, Director Carlson, so in a nutshell, what is the finances for Office of Veterans Affairs? What do they have now currently on the books?
Uh, they have 114,000 as uh, you know, stated in their response to the FOIA from the '21 uh, transfer from the Office of the Governor. They have the entirety of their 968,000 dollars available to them. Uh, 197,000 has been put in reserve because when the Office of Veterans Affairs asked for the allocation of that uh, budget, um, it was for capital um, acquisition, capital outlay, equipment and supplies. Um, they haven't accessed that yet because of the, you know, the change in costs and things of that nature. Uh, but that money, the 197 in FY22 remains available to them. And then finally, uh, they have 1.2 million dollars available, which I think Mr. Uggan probably needs to um, better articulate that he he's probably gonna need uh, a big part of that uh, for a local match, uh, for what it is that he's looking at from the national level. Uh, he hasn't mentioned that, um, and if I'm speaking out of turn, Mr. Uggan, please correct me, but in our conversations, you were gonna need some of the, the bulk of the 1.2 million dollars for local match requirements.
Okay, so quick question. So it's actually greater than the 15%? What, um, is that typical to withhold more than 15% of a budget?
Yes, uh, in this case, because the entirety of what he asked for, for capital outlay was put in reserve, not just 15%. It's available to him and when, when, when they are able to solidify and re recalculate the cost for uh, what it was that was uh, envisioned, then the monies are absolutely available. Absolutely.
Yeah, so I've, I've heard, you know, actually, also money from other um, employees that sometimes it takes quite a a while to get things certified. So funds to be certified, even though they were appropriated in the budget. Um, so I guess what are the reasons for a delay in certification of funds?
Certification of funds at any um, paperwork, uh, Senator Perez, I have a five-day turnaround. Anybody who tells you that there's a uh, an issue, um, if the paperwork is correct, if the uh, there we, there, there's not an error that was made by the department in submitting the request, then everything that is is done is got uh, from the time it comes in to the time it goes out, it's five days. Five days.
Okay, that's, that's good, that's good to know for all that are listening that BBMR will give a five-day turnaround time uh, for certification of funds pending if the the app- application is correct.
That's correct, ma'am.
All right, so um, all right, uh, okay, I think those are my questions so far, but I think we do have other panel members, um, Mr. Chair, uh, that are here. I believe they, if they wanna speak, I'd like to.
What, what, are 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 you done, Senator Perez? Um, I I see them there. I see Mr. Sinagastin, I see, I see uh, Kunal, Bill, Kundif, um, I want everybody to finish their questions and then um, Uncle Joe, Sinagastin, do you plan on having any comments or anything or, and we can move along because if not, I see you shaking hands. Is that yes or no?
Definitely yes.
All right, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Sinagastin.
Well, Mr. Chair and uh, honorable senators, uh, thank you, Tim and your team. Thank you for being here this afternoon. Uh, Lester, thank you for all your, your great work and and your input uh, with regards to this bill. Uh, in in my situation as a um, chairperson for the Vet Commission, I I will support this bill in its entirety. And and this is the reason why to to allow the Veterans Affairs Office to be able to freely do as well, acquire uh, assets, equipment, or material necessary for for the daily operation. I know you uh, you indicated uh, that uh, uh, substantial amount of uh, grants are are coming in left and right. And uh, my understanding are those grants are actually to be utilized for improvements, repairs, and uh, um, other things that are not uh, to mix in with the daily operation uh, of funding. Uh, I I I hear Lester, and and it makes a lot of sense, uh, as long as uh, we cross our dots and Ts. Uh, the system is good. Uh, where where I think some of the confusions are from the state offices uh, thinking that at the end of the year, uh, instead of purchasing or doing a request or proposal for a lifter or an equipment that's needed two years ago, you know, we're, we're gonna look at the budget and see what we have left at the, at the end of the year. And I fully agree with Lester that all the procurement should start at the beginning of the fiscal year. And I could tell you right now, there are an urgent need for a lifter, urgent need for a lowering device. Uh, so why should we wait? You know, a lot of those request for proposal or or identifying how much the cost for these equipment should have been done way in advance. And I understand there's gonna be changes, right, because you know, it 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 happens, the cost of shipment before is different, for now, it's more expensive. I am gonna state that I'm gonna fully uh, support this bill. And uh, understanding from, from my standpoint that I I need to continue to support and And understanding from, from my standpoint, that I, I need to continue to support and work with the state office in my capacity as a, a chairperson for the commission, as an advisory board in its, in its body, to continue to work with Mr. Uggan, to continue to push forward and continue to make improvements and corrections, on whatever other things that need to take place, so that we can serve our, our veterans and their family like we should. The trip that Mr. Uggan and Ms. Lucy had taken, what was a much-needed trip, you, you have to physically network with these people. And, and these are the folks that we need to continue to network with, so that they could give us advice of what else, and how can we pursue to move forward to correct many of the deficiencies and shortfalls that's been happening with our state office, and particularly our cemetery. So I did meet up with Mr. Uggan last week, and I did tell him that I will be on this Zoom. I will support Mr. Uggan and, 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 you know, the, the employees in, in, in every movement of what they do. And, and, and that's just, you know, being a veteran, right, but it's the right thing to do. Tim, I'll, I'll continue to work with you. I, I just hope Mr. Peter Trelawney will, will engage with us also, keeping the, the oversight. But with that said, we, we still need to move forward. We're making right decisions, so that we could spend those funds efficiently like they should be. So, so that's all that, that I have, and I thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Senators, and those of y'all that are in attendance for, for hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinagustian. Mr. Bill Kundif, Cunial, you have anything else you wanted to say? Unmute, please. Un, un, unmute another bit. There you go. Unmute, fans, ah, you muted? You would have to unmute, Bill, on your side? Get to say you still muted? There you go. Ogo bago.
Anyway, I just want to say that I had a meeting with a director last week, and I'm, I'm actually impressed with the things that they're trying to do down there to improve services for veterans and their families. Very impressed. I'm also very impressed with Lucia Perez. Lucia is, I guess, came from another organization borrowed over for detail to the VA. She's doing a fantastic job. I hope, I hope she stays there, because she's doing a good job. All of those people down there are doing a good job. They're very sincere in what they do. It appears that there's no problem going on as far as the budget is concerned. They're just chugging along, doing their job, doing their best. One of the things that, I don't know if it was mentioned, because I was kind of late getting in here, is that there is a program that they're working on that will digitize the cemetery. Everybody that's buried in the cemetery, their families would have the opportunity to set up a webpage, so people can look at, at their legacies. That, that is a hard work. They're working on it. And hopefully, soon, we'll be able to digitize and be able to put legacies up there for everybody that's buried at the VA cemetery. That's really all I have to say. There, I'm very proud that they, they got six on board now. Like you, every time I pass the cemetery, I stop by and look at it. And I would, let's give them the opportunity to take all these funds and, and expand them and see where we at in, in a few months. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am, Mr. Kundif. Senator Telo, we're gonna go ahead and close it up. You do your closing, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to get from Mr. Kundif, if, I didn't know if he said he supported the bill or not. He's on, he's on mute. You're on mute, Mr. Kundif.
Go on, on mute, Bill.
Yes, yes, I do support the bill.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Chair, did Tim Ono have a chance to say anything? I, I, I don't know if you, I know he's been here the whole entire time.
He was on last time. Tim, did you have something you wanted to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, not much. I just wanted to say I do support this bill, so hopefully it passes. But thank you for letting me just speak a little bit. I've been listening the whole time and learning as well. And that's great to the VA Office Director for being able to get additional funding for improvements. That'd be great. Congratulations on that. Thanks again for just the opportunity to be invited to this Zoom hearing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Telo. Now, we, we're gonna go straight to closing, so please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not gonna belittle this a, a, any longer. I just wanted to say thank you to those who came to testify, Mr. Sinagustian, Jose Sinagustian, Bill Kundif, and Tim, you know, for being the guard to watch over the Veterans Office. You have been there to make sure that they're doing their job. And, and you're holding the feet to their fire, you know, to Tim, Mr. Uggan's feet, and, and making sure that he, he's doing his job. So I want to thank you guys for being those guardsmen for, for the Veterans Office. But this bill is simply just taking the politics out of it. And that's what I hear from veterans all the time, where politics gets in the way, you know, and that's all we're doing. It doesn't matter what administration comes, who's there now, or who comes tomorrow. You know, it's taking it out of, taking politics out. Now, there, I mean, if we didn't have this, Mr. Chair, this public hearing, we wouldn't not have known there was $114,000 in, in the account, as well as the, according to physical note, Mr. Chair, that was brought up, 98,000 of reserve. We still don't know, according to Lucia, she said earlier that the 98,000 in reserve is there. But according to the physical note, there is no funding, no reserve left from 2021. So it, I mean, this is getting, you know, a little bit confusing to a point where we, if, Lucia's an excellent person, by the way. She's been in the private sector, she's run the numbers before, she's done an excellent job, even formerly at GTA. And I, I have confidence that she knows how to budget, knows how to put some funding away if needed. And that's what this bill is gonna do. It's not only gonna allow them to control their own budget and how it's being spent based on their program. But, Mr. Chair, if I'm not mistaken, this bill also would assist them into ensuring that the money stays in the veteran's account, and there's no transferring out of any kind of funding from the Veterans Office. That's 15%. And then, the governor has 5% to transfer out. And like I said, this is a small agency, Mr. Chair. That's, if you look at how much reserve in 15%, that's $12,000 a month. 12,000. That's a lot for a small agency. Allow this department, an area that we, we are so grateful for the services that they provide us, the freedom that they provide us. Those who put themselves on the line for our freedom. Let's give them the, the respect and the dignity to at least take politics out of it and allow them to create their own budget. And that's all this bill will do, Mr. Chair. And I humbly ask for your vote, Mr. Chair, on this, because you're hearing it from the veterans themselves. They support this bill. They support it. And I think this is the, the step forward in, in moving in and making an agent like this stand on its own. Of course, with the help of us, when it comes to appropriations. But again, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director Tim. And of course, Lucia, thank you so much for all you're doing at the Veterans Office. And please, extend our warmest gratitude to all your employees at the Veterans Office. Please extend that to them as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Telo. By the way, there being no additional individuals to testify on Bill 249, there's 36, the committee will continue to receive testimony. Please submit your testimony to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature or through email at senatorjoessenagustian@gmail.com. Again, I want to thank everyone for attending this virtual public hearing and for providing feedback and suggestions. Thank you to everyone that participated, my colleagues, and for the people of Guam. The public hearing is now adjourned for Bill 249, there's 36, you are. The time now is 3:12. Jesus Mase, for your attendance, please stay safe, wear your mask, wash your hands, and hopefully keep a safe distance. Take care. Adio.